Good evening and welcome to the November 7th meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. Commissioner Kramer, would you lead us in the Pledge Allegiance, please?
I'm ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Turley, would you call the roll, please?
Let the record show that the student commissioners and all of the commissioners are present except for Commissioner Carroll.
Okay. And the next item on our agenda, Commissioners, is approval of the minutes of the October 17th meeting. Are there any corrections or comments on the meeting, on the minutes? If not, could I hear a motion to approve? Commissioner Jackal?
I move approval of the minutes as presented.
And Commissioner Garrison?
I would second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the October 17th meeting. All in favor, our voting system is working tonight, so all in favor, cast your votes, The minutes passed on a five to one to one vote. Commissioner Kramer was abstinent, so she has to abstain, and Commissioner Carroll is absent, so. The next item on our agenda is oral communications for, and this is an item on the agenda for citizens to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda. I have no speaker slips. Is there anyone that would like to talk to the commission about an item that's not on our agenda? If not, we will move on to public hearings. Public hearings, as you have read in the agenda statement, there will be a staff presentation on the item. The applicant will make a presentation, and then we will open the public hearing up for members of the public to address the commission on the item. So, I have a stack of speaker slips if you wish to address the commission on this item. If you would fill out the slip and give it to our recording secretary. Having said that, Commissioner, or Mr. Conley, would you tell us about Monarch Buena Vista, please?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. This is an application for a site development plan, a tentative map, and a condo housing permit, which includes a mitigated negative declaration for the Monarch Buena Vista project. The application is located at 751 East Vista Way. Ms. Chow, can you forward the slides for me? It looks like this thing is, thank you. It's a 13.42 acre site. It's two legal parcels. It's the former location of the Sycamore Creek Mobile Home Park, located east of East Vista Way and south of Townsite Drive, Civic Center Drive, and Vista Village, East Vista Way is southeast of the site. The Buena Vista Creek runs along the western site boundary, and the surrounding land uses include commercial land uses to the west as well as north, single-family residential to the northeast, multifamily residential to the southeast, and the Ranch of Buena Vista Adobe to the south. The general plan is shown on the left here. This includes mixed use and open space designations on the overall 13.42 acre site. Open space covers the Buena Vista Creek corridor, and the mixed-use designation covers the remainder of the property. The zoning is the downtown specific plan, specifically within the Civic Center District. The land use is shown down there in the corner on the right-hand side, which includes mixed use in the northerly portion of the site and open space, I'm sorry, mixed use in the southerly portion and open space in the green northerly portion where the detention basin would ultimately go. The specific plan also notes a future trail connection, which is the green line with a dot on it, which would extend along Buena Vista Creek. That's from the downtown specific plan. Some history on the site, it was purchased in 1989 by the city primarily for rent control. The city ran the Mobile Home Park there until 2004 when it was closed, and we relocated all of the existing residents. I believe there are a little over 100 residents there prior to the closure. In 2006, the redevelopment agency moved forward with a development agreement to build 59 single-family residential homes, which was processed but then withdrawn in 2008 prior to any decision because of the change in the market that occurred at that time. In 2009, while the property was vacant, the city entered into an agreement with the Vista Conservancy, which is still active, to use the property as a public trail. And in 2015, the city entered into a development agreement with Monarch, the applicant here tonight, for development of up to 179 multifamily units on the site. Monarch submitted their application in September of last year, and it includes a mitigated negative declaration in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, a site development plan for 179 units, a vesting tentative subdivision map to create a one-lot condominium on the property, and a condominium housing permit to permit conversion of the residential units to condominiums in the future. The first order of business that the city actually has to take care of is a boundary adjustment. You'll note on the left-hand side, the 13.42 acre site is two parcels, which is a linear division there that's shown by the green line. We're required to do a boundary adjustment to establish a new lot, which if you forward, we'll show in green, which is the lot that the developer will purchase. The remaining white area will be retained as city-owned property and will include the creek corridor below the, excuse me, the creek corridor exclusive of the project limits. The off-site shared parking lot, which is the small panhandle portion of the site, and the area where the detention basin would be built in the northern portion of the property. So the project includes multiple onsite and off-site improvements. I'll just briefly go over those. Onsite, 179 multifamily units will be built. That includes 59 one-bedroom, 108 two-bedroom, and 12 three-bedroom units. 11 of those units would be affordable or at 60% of the median income level, that's 6% of the project. There would be 14 three-story residential buildings comprising all of the residential units and two-story, two-one-story recreation clubhouse buildings along with the amenities. Parking on the site would be 326 spaces, and there would be 24 spaces off-site within the shared parking lot for a total of 350 parking spaces. Onsite would be 179 garage spaces and 147 open spaces, and there would be 24 open spaces in the off-site lot. Access to the property would be provided via Townsite Drive with an internal 24 to 26-foot wide private driveway that would extend into the property from the end of Townsite. Landscaping would cover 44% of the project site. As far as off-site improvements, it would include a 10-foot wide public trail along the creek. That would include seating areas, fencing and landscaping, a vehicular access bridge from Townsite Drive, a shared use parking lot for the trail and for guest parking with 24 spaces, riparian restoration within the creek, an emergency access driveway accessing the adjacent commercial site through the Adobe, and landscaping on city property to include a trail, the creek restoration, and some landscaping on the Adobe, which I'll cover. The project would also potentially use some dirt from the city's property as a borrow pit in the area where we would develop the detention basin ultimately. This shows the site plan. Again, access from the northern portion of the property off Townsite Drive. There would be a gated entry where the darker color is there that would be enhanced pavers, and the parking would be located along the eastern perimeter of the site with the shaded areas being the residential buildings within. And this shows the amenity there near the entry as well as the off-site parking lot and the trail. This is the site plan that's included in your packet. It's got all of the technical details on it as far as elevations of the buildings and details associated with the grading. It's a little difficult to see, so I'm not going to go over it, but I'm happy to answer questions about the details on the plan, of course. The architecture of the project is a California-style architecture with historic Spanish influence, includes elements such as stucco walls, arched openings, Mission-style barrel tiles on the roof, wood trellises, balcony accents, et cetera. The architecture mimics some of the surrounding commercial buildings, such as some of the fire station next door and some of the Adobe elements as well. And the project architects here, I'm sure he'll want to cover the architecture with you, but these are some good renderings. This is the two-dimensional drawings of the buildings. This is the building type II, which is the most common building throughout the property. Again, the applicant will cover a lot of the architectural slides, so I'm not going to get into too much detail there. As far as the landscape plan, again, they landscaped 44% of their site. That excludes the off-site improvements within the creek and along the parking lot and at the entry, but it would significantly exceed what the city's landscape requirements Include extensive amenities within their amenitized area, pool and spa, exercise building and clubhouse would be their three main amenities, but they also have multiple smaller amenities, which are all listed there and shown on the landscape plan in more detail. Off-site improvements, just covering what they're going to do on the city's property. On the left there, there would be emergency access road, which would be paved and paver road combination over to the commercial center to the south. The public trail, which we've discussed, would be a 10-foot wide trail through the site. The off-site parking lot is shown in blue, which would also include a pedestrian connection across the existing bridge that's there to the trail, and a bridge and private street that would connect to Townsite Drive. They'd be responsible for construction of all those improvements. They would also be enhancing the creek, as shown in the cross-section here, and pulling the creek slope back to do, to build the trail and include the riparian enhancement. Some other off-site improvements that I wanted to mention is there were some concerns expressed early on about the Adobe courtyard and the views of the project from the courtyard. The applicant came back and proposed planting some large specimen oak trees on the Adobe property as well as some shrubbery adjacent to the site, which would screen the majority of the property from the courtyard, and the applicant has agreed to do that, and that's been conditioned to be installed at the start of construction before the buildings go vertical. With respect to the staff review of the application, the project site is located in the mixed-use designation of the general plan permits up to 40 dwelling units per acre. The project density is about 22.4 units to the acre, so within the designation that permits residential at multifamily. It's adjacent to Opportunity Area 1 within the general plan, which is Buena Vista Creek. The policy supports setbacks from the creek and enhancement of the riparian corridor, both of which the project provide, as well as a public walking trail from Wildwood to Bringle Terrace, and the project would fill in their piece of that trail. The project would be compatible with surrounding commercial and residential land uses, and it would comply with our housing element for providing additional above-moderate housing within the City of Vista. With regard to the circulation element, there's an extensive traffic analysis in the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the project, which evaluates intersections serving the project area. The traffic analysis determined there were no direct significant traffic impacts on this project. There would be some cumulative impacts, which are handled through payment of the city's traffic impact fee, that about $4,200 per unit. That fee is used for congestion management projects citywide and would mitigate the cumulative impacts from the project. With regard to the other elements, it would preserve the creek associated with the resource conservation element. It would provide adequate public services to serve the property with regard to the public facilities element, and it would provide for the future flood control project in the northern portion of the property, which would protect downstream properties within Vista's downtown area. With regard to the specific plan, again, the Civic Center designation allows 40 DU per acre, the projects within that. The parking requirements, when calculated out, equate to 350 spaces. That's provided along with a 24-space off-site lot. As identified in the staff report, the commission has discretion as to whether or not they want to allow that off-site lot to be used toward the guest parking requirement, but the staff is recommending support of that. This is the off-site lot, sorry. With regard to the design guidelines, the architecture, as discussed, meets the design requirements of the specific plan. The project provides the number of amenities that are required by our design guidelines. It provides security in the way of gated entries and gated pedestrian access. It also has internal laundry hookups and internal access to some of the private garages as required within the design guidelines. The project came before you about a year ago for early design review. The commission raised a number of issues. Those issues were all identified and discussed in the staff report. I'm happy to go into detail about any of those particular issues that the commission would like to revisit, but I'm not going to discuss each one. I just wanted to let you know that those are all covered within the staff report that was provided, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions about the early design review comments. A cross-section was provided in the packet, which shows the elevations of the site compared to adjacent uses across the creek and the residential units above. As we detailed in the early design review meeting, these units would be about 15 to 20 feet below the multifamily residential units to the east, as far as rooftop to grade elevation, so the units above would be looking over. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the mitigated negative declaration, as well as the site development plan, vesting tentative map, and condominium housing permit for the Monarch Buena Vista project, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Commissioners, why don't we hold our questions until we hear from Mr. Stone and Ms. Gunter? And so, Mr. Stone, I understand you want to go first in the presentation here? Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Rod Stone. I reside at 7727 Herschel in San Diego, California. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight and for working with us through this review process. We are excited to be working again in the City of Vista and have been selected for this unique project. Monarch founding partners, including myself, have over 40 years of experience in San Diego in developing high-end residential projects, which includes working collaboratively with the City of Vista on a 314-unit Monarch at Shadow Ridge that we developed about a decade ago in the City of Vista. We have a long history of developing the high-end quality multifamily projects that create innovative solutions to residential development challenges. This includes more than 11,000 units that we have built in over 50 projects in the San Diego region alone. We usually take on only a handful of projects, and typically, we are hands-on. Our all of our partners are working literally diligently every day on the project to make sure that what we create is something that we will all be happy and excited about when we finish it, which is typical of what we did at Shadow Ridge in Vista. We are excited by the ongoing renaissance of the downtown Vista area and have the opportunity to be working with the city on this project. We believe that this site is a phenomenal, terrific location, especially given the proximity to downtown, as well as the beautiful setting and opportunity to turn the creek into a unique amenity for the entire community. Our goal is to raise the bar even higher than what we built at Shadow Ridge, making the most of this special site and deliver high-quality housing in a great location and the proximity to downtown and close to transit. Making the creek area is a special amenity, a beautiful setting for our future residents while transforming this section with a public trail connection. We have worked very diligently with the Vista Conservancy, and we've come up with, I think, some great ideas, and we look forward in implementing these in, as we develop our project. Thanks to you and all the city's staff for their dedication and efforts to date. We look forward to working cooperatively with the city going forward. We have our full team here this evening to answer any questions that you might have, and at this time, I would like to turn it over to Ann Gunter for additional details, unless there are any questions you, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ann Gunter. I'm with the Lightfoot Planning Group. Our offices are at 5900 Pasteur Court in Carlsbad, and I'm here this evening representing Monarch. Chairman Rossler, Commissioners, I'm really pleased to be here tonight. This has been a really interesting project to work on. It's been a great client to have because they do do high-quality projects. But one of the things that I think really helped us on this project was your early design review process. I had not been through that on a project with you before, and getting that early feedback from you, as well as from the community, I think really helped us to refine this project and make it something that's a better project than what we came forward with. They tell me this doesn't work, so. This is just a highlight slide. This is actually out of the negative declaration and kind of shows an overview of the uses that John's already mentioned. The yellow area is the residential portion of the site. The green is obviously the widened creek with the trail. The blue area is the city's future flood detention basin, and as John mentioned, this project is going to be excavating that basin. The purple areas show the shared parking lot as well as the crossing, and that crossing at Townsite is shown as in purple because it has joint functions for both access to the project and for providing the culverts and the basis that's needed to have the water flow into the basin in the future. So again, this shows approximately the location of the weir, which will be done by the city as a separate project. This is, again, this is a slide similar to what John had. This just shows the ownership areas, the difference between what will be retained in city ownership in blue and what is considered the residential portion. If you have looked in detail at any of the conditions, there are a number of improvements that Monarch is making within those areas, and there is a number of long-term maintenance responsibilities that Monarch will have over those areas as well. The existing channel, creek channel out there, as you know, is very, it's very narrow. It has a few very lovely native trees, but it has a lot of non-natives and a lot of invasive plants in it. It's been heavily impacted through that channelization and by urban influences, and again, we looked at this as an opportunity to really upgrade the creek. We needed to do a lot of things with this creek. We had to enhance its flood capacity. We needed to do the revegetation within the widened channel, and then we needed to account for the public trail. So we worked really closely with our technical staff, with the biologists, the hydrologists, the engineers, to make certain that the flood control design for the creek would be appropriate, and that we also had, you know, a great enhancement in terms of native plants and widening that creek channel. So this shows the creek channel as it exists today on the property. It extends a little bit off-site to the west, but as you know, that west side is very, very steep. And then the next slide shows the widened creek area and the trail. And again, the way that was designed is that trail forms kind of a flood bench, so it takes up some, it allows for some flood flows at lower flood elevations to be below that trail and to have some capacity in the creek, and then still have slope bank above that that's vegetated to provide the landscape and the appealing aesthetics for that trail section. This shows the existing condition of the creek. It's one section through there, but again, it shows a steep-sided creek. It shows the level area for the, where the trailer park was. And the next slide is, shows how that creek is widened. You can see there's a little bit of excavation at that current toe where the old fill was. That comes up into a slope that's revegetated up to that bench with the trail. And that bench is about 12 feet wide minimum, and then the 10-foot trail was in there. So there's enough room to have the fence and any kind of slope, the little area next to the slope, so that that trail section at 10 feet is 10-foot clear. That is one of the items that was requested at early design review, and it was kind of an easy thing to do first, was to realize that we needed that trail to be a 10-foot wide section, to be more consistent with where that trail is, how that trail is configured in other locations. The, I'm sorry, Patsy, back. Yeah, I'm going to stay on that one for a while. The, one of the things I wanted to mention in terms of doing all the work on the creek design is that we have also been working very closely with the resource agencies and with FEMA. FEMA had to review the creek cross-section for changes in the floodway and the floodplain, and we have approval of our conditional letter of map revision. So that is, they're happy with this design, subject to building it. We have our authorization from California Department of Fish and Wildlife already, and we're very close to having the Army Corps of Engineers acceptance and approval of their permit, we hope. So again, we wanted to make sure that we went through all of that process, and staff wanted to make sure we went through that process, so that when we brought this design to you for your approval, we knew it wasn't going to need to change, that we had already met all of the state and federal requirements associated with the creek, as well as the city's desires for the enhancements. The last thing I want to talk about with the trail that had come up in early design review was a question about how does the trail get across Townsite Drive? And so what we did, after some discussions with the Conservancy and our design team, is that we're adding what we call a tabletop paved area. So it, basically, it's a raised area in the pavement, so that as you enter the project, it gives you a visual clue to slow down. It's got a little bump. That raised area keeps it level, oop, excuse me, level with the trail as it comes across, so somebody doesn't have to go up and down a curb if they're on that trail section. And there's enhanced pavement, so that it's got a different surface and a different texture, again, to let people know that this is a trail crossing. It's going to be signed as a trail crossing, and so hopefully, people don't go flying through that, that street section. They slow down for that. The next one now, Patsy, thank you. And one more. So, little hard to see is the red circles, but the one on the upper right is the trail crossing and the paving at that crossing. And I also use this slide to highlight the additional enhanced paving that we've added at all of the project intersections, in front of the community center and at every main intersection. Again, sort of as a visual cue to someone to slow down and that there is some cross-traffic coming in there. The other, not the other, there were, another item that came up during early design review was a criticism about the elevation of Building 2 as it faced the Adobe, and probably rightly so. It was pretty, pretty plain. So the design that we had in front of you at early design review is on the left, and the new design is on the right. And then the next slide shows that elevation in three dimensions, so you can see additionally the, you know, how that, the massing works on that end. It's not just a flat edge. It has a lot of give and take, and we realized that that really was an important, an important edge. Having said that, the, the Adobe itself, people probably don't really want to look at these buildings as pretty as I might think they are. And so we worked again with, with staff, and we looked at ways to better screen these buildings. There's other development next to the Adobe. It's closer than this is, but this is going to be the first new development, and it's going to be a big change from what is there right now. So what we did, as John mentioned, it, Patsy, if you could go to the next one, is, and again, this is the same slide John had. You can see we've got a big row of trees in front of the buildings on the property. Those are tall trystania trees meant to kind of do some fairly fast growth and screening. But we also added those three oak trees on the Adobe property upright by the courtyard, so that there's some foreground screening on a pretty immediate basis. And those are going to be very large oaks. They're going to plant out at about 20 to 25 feet tall, and they will grow They're going to plant out at about 20 to 25 feet tall, and they will grow to be 35 to 80, depending on how happy they are in that location. And again, the idea was to get some immediate screening for the area from the inside of that courtyard. The area that's in kind of lime green is the north edge of the walkway. And in that area, if you go out there right now, there's a, like a maintenance access, a little DG path that they use to take equipment in and out for maintenance of the site. That is not going to be necessary anymore. But next to that is where this project will be doing the, their utility connection for sewer. And so that entire area looked like it was a good opportunity for revegetation, kind of cleaning everything up and adding a row of very tall native shrubs along the boundary, and then doing some lower-growing natives to fill that in and really enhance that area. So as you're coming in the walkway, you have a nice, fresh, new landscape edge there. And this visual pack, these visuals were in your packet. I think John showed the last one. This is the existing view. The next one shows the buildings just with the plantings of the trees next to the, within the project site. And then the final one shows the screening that is added by adding those oak trees. I don't want to talk a lot about architecture. I think you've probably seen a lot of this architecture, but it does use the classic elements, as John mentioned, and it uses some colors and some detailing that we think are really appropriate for this area. There was some question about those little overhangs over the garage in these two-dimensional exhibits, and they look a little odd sometimes on this two-dimensional. So again, the architect did a rendering to show on the next slide a little bit about how that, how that feels with the pop-outs and the extensions over the garage, which really, I think, helped enhance the motor court area. Gives it a little warmer feeling and almost makes the garages feel more recessed by doing And this last one, again, John touched on it. Really, there was a question at, that came up in our discussions with the community about the heights of those buildings as they would be relative to the townhomes. And the next one is just one of those cross-sections. And I'm talking about this because we added a little, that kind of yellow-orange line onto this plan that you can see in the middle. That is the existing grade of the trailer park. And we just wanted to enhance that because there's about, on that edge next to the creek as it's being pulled back and filled in, it's about 10 to 13-foot of fill under those buildings. And then up against the slope edge, it's cut about 10 to 13 feet on that, right at the base of that slope. So again, that's what creates that level pad for the new buildings. Not a huge change either direction, but we thought that would be a helpful way to visualize how those buildings are going to sit into the property. John talked about the central recreation. That's our primary kind of community gathering area. There are lots of amenities in that. Patsy, the next one, I think we just hyped. That's the architecture for the clubhouse and the exercise building. And the next slide shows all of the different elements that are part of that community activity area. And then again, that's something that's been really successful for Monarch and their other projects. It's really a kind of a focal point for people to come. The mail kiosk is in that area as well, so people have a tendency to be there on daily basis. But we also understood and took to heart some of the comments about needing some additional amenities towards the southern end of the site. And the next one, Patsy. So what we added in there were, was a barbecue area kind of towards the lower area, that's the circle. And then the two ovals are areas that we had some, were able to add some width next to the creek enhanced, the widened creek area at the top of the slope. And so we've added in there what they're calling like a natural totlot, which looks like fun to me. It's logs, it's like a stump jump, so it's a big area so kids can run back and forth and have something to play on. And then also a kind of a community gathering area, some more informal seating areas and some views and some ability to kind of get together and gather with their neighbors, a little more informal play area. I think this project is going to be an asset to the city in a lot of ways. And I think Monarch has really fulfilled their objective and what I think the city's objectives were, to have a really quality project in this location that also delivers improvements that are going to benefit the community with the trail connection and hopefully make the city's detention basin project a little bit easier to accomplish down the line. We have reviewed all of the conditions of approval. We are in agreement with all of those conditions. We appreciate staff working so well with us through this whole process and kind of keeping us on track. As Rod mentioned, we have lots of our team members here, if not all of them. So if we have any questions that I can't answer, then I will defer to them. And we certainly thank you for your, for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for staff or Ms. Gunter? Commissioner Garrison?
Just a couple of questions. If you look at that site now, there's a fence that goes around it. And that fence has a road that goes behind that fence, just below the houses. Is this footprint going to be the same as it is now? Meaning, is that fencing around this going to be closer to the houses on the east than it is now? In other words, if you, if you go by that area now, there's a chain-link fence between the former trailer park and the houses on the hill. Is that where this property line is going to go to after it's built? Because there is a road behind there. I don't know where that road goes to.
So there are roads, there are roads behind that fence that I believe that was part of the original trailer park. And so the property line for the residential homes, both the single-family homes and the townhomes, it's about 35 feet down that slope. There's about 35-foot of elevation differential. I'm not certain I'm, I know exactly where that chain-link fence is relative to the property boundary, but I know that the, the trailer park had a number of different roads. And so everything that is reasonably level is within the area of this project. So I believe that that chain-link fence.
The chain-link fence is where it is level. But on the other side, or the east side of that fence, there's a road that goes back there, and it had a gate, so I didn't go back there. But there's a road that goes back there, and the question is, where is this fence line going to be? Where the present fence line is, or is it going to be more east?
It would be.
So if you're referring to the fence line that's adjacent to the lower pad area where you walk, there's an upper pad area that's part of the site that would all be part of it and graded. So there's another fence line that's all the way back at the top of that slope that is, that separates the property, the subject property from the adjacent residential properties. That's where the future wrought iron gate would go that would separate this property from the adjacent properties.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, that it is on the easterly chain-link fence and not the one that is on the flat area now.
That's correct. That was put in as part of the Conservancy project to use the lower area for public access.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Looney?
Yeah, John, on the, on your presentation, there was a line item that addressed TIF fees, traffic impact fees. And it said that the funds from each living unit would be assigned to particular projects for congestive traffic resolution. Could you give an example of a project as such?
Sure.
That the city might do?
The fee for each residential unit is about $4,200 a unit, and any new unit in the city has to pay that fee. It pays for citywide traffic improvements. That money goes into a pot that's used for capital improvement program. Our traffic congestion management program is part of the CIP, and we do numerous traffic improvement and enhancement projects that that money is used for. Typically, it's, it's capacity building, so it's widening lanes, extending turn lanes, you know, widening roadways to add additional lanes, that type of a project. It has to be capacity-enhancing. Sometimes it involves improving a total frontage of a street that's unimproved to provide sidewalk, curb, gutter, and, you know, bike lanes. But generally, that money is used to meet our circulation element designation for the roadways within our city. So all the roadways that are in our circulation element, arterials and collector streets, are designed to be fully improved. We calculate the cost of that improvement, and then we assign it to each of the new residential units. So that money's put into a pot. One of the projects we'll be doing on East Vista Way is a median project. That's not money that we're using the enhancement for, but it's a traffic safety project. But as part of that, we're going to stripe northbound Vista Way to three lanes, all the way out to, I think, Bobier, Foothill. Traffic congestion relief, trying to move the traffic through those heavier parts of town during peak hour. That's the kind of project that that money would be used for.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. Couple of questions for Mr. Conley, perhaps. First of all, excuse me, is there pedestrian access to this property from the Rancho Blena Vista adobe property?
Not directly, no. There would be an emergency access gate along the southerly portion that would provide that vehicular access to the commercial center across the way. The pedestrian access would be via the trail, so you could walk out of the adobe property, get onto the trail and head north, and there would be a pedestrian gate there that a resident could go into, but there won't be direct access.
Okay, thank you. And this ship has probably already sailed, but I'm fretting about the parking. This is mixed-use project, 100% residential in the downtown specific plan. So we don't have the parking requirements for citywide, multiple-family development.
That's correct. It uses, this project is relying on the downtown specific plan parking standards, which are 1 and 1/4 space for a one-bedroom, 2 and 1/4 for a two-bedroom, and 2 and 3/4 for a three-bedroom.
Okay, well, so there are 179 units, which if you count only two cars per unit, that's 358 cars to be parked. And there, including 45 spaces for visitors, there are going to be 350 spaces provided. And since some of these are two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartments, I imagine there are going to be more than 358 cars. So I'm just saying, I think that's going to be a problem.
So the staff can only enforce what's in our code?
I know, I know, I know.
And that's what we've held the applicant to?
Right.
The planning commission has discretion in the use of the off-site parking lot that we talked about, but really, that's the extent of where our discretion lies for this project.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions, probably shared between Ms. Gunter and Mr. Conley. Security entrance, security at the entrance, what does that mean? Is this gated a community to drive through, or?
There will be a gate at the, at the entryway typically, and I'm going to ask Monarch to nod if I'm correct, but typically, that gate is left open during the day because that's when the leasing office is there and there are people there, and then it's closed in the evenings, correct? Yeah.
Excuse me, the clubhouse, is that going to be similar to the clubhouse at Shadow Ridge? And also, the clubhouse, I believe it's Mira Mesa, so this is going back prior to, with the media room, with the cookies baked every day?
Yes, it'll be very similar to Shadow Ridge. I don't know about the Mira Mesa one, but the leasing office is in there. But the other amenities that are in that clubhouse are resident amenities. There's a full kitchen, they do cooking classes, apparently they bake cookies, which I may have to stop by for. There's a fitness room, there's a media room, a theater that's in there, usually some sort of a game room, computer room.
Yep.
So, yes.
So that's the same. The affordable units, is it a combination of one, two, and three-bedroom?
Yes, it's proportional to the mix that's in the project.
Okay, so more two-bedrooms than ones and threes?
Correct.
Got it. What is the density of the Shadow Ridge, Monarch Shadow Ridge, roughly?
I believe it's about 13 to 14 units per acre.
Okay, and this is 20, 22?
This is 22.
22, okay. So it's a little, this is a little bit more dense.
Monarch at Shadow Ridge is a two-story product. This is a three-story product.
True, okay, okay. Thank you, those are my questions for now.
John, they're doing a vested tentative map, and yet they're, are they going to record a final map right away, or, or when will that, how will that work?
So they'll be able to record a final map within the timeframes that are allowed by the subdivision map act? The city typically gives you five years. It's three years plus two extensions.
So that will lock us into the affordable units that way, even though they're going to be renting the units?
The affordable units are a requirement as a condition, so whether they're rented or sold, it's a standard requirement.
Okay, all right.
The, well, that, hopefully that answers your question. It doesn't change with respect to the condo development.
As long as we get the units, that's fine. The staff report says that the detention basin is currently unfunded. Will we, will there be a connection between where the trail ends now and where they'll build it through the, through the property?
Yeah, so that there will be what we'll call an unimproved trail. It will be graded, and it will be passable by pedestrians, but it won't be fully improved with headers and all the finish improvements until the city's able to finish the detention basin.
Okay. And Ms. Gunter, it wasn't clear to me on the landscaping plan what the surface of the totlot was. There were three different patterns down there, so I, I was just curious what that...
It's always, our landscape architect tells me it's resilient surfacing, so it makes it ADA compliant for the...
And then, for the two of you, a couple of months ago, further up the creek, we had an open space easement that we were dealing with, and there were Mexican fan palms in that. John told us at that time that the fan palms were invasive species, and they were going to be cut down, or could be. And then on the landscaping plan, we have both date palms and king palms, I believe. Is there any possibility that the palm trees will propagate themselves into the creek? Are we...
Our landscape architect says neither of those palms are considered invasive, and they're also within the areas of the site that would be groomed, and so the seed pods would be trimmed and...
So there is a list of invasive species that the, that's generally maintained by the state, and we follow that in terms of the landscape plans that are adjacent to riparian areas like this. Neither of those species are on that list.
Okay, very good. Okay, all right. I think that does it for me right now. Thank you very much. Stay close. We'll, we'll open the public hearing. Wait a minute. Commissioner Garrison and Commissioner Bill have questions. Commissioner Garrison? Just a question about the roadway goes over toward the adobe. Is there a bridge built on that southern part that goes west across the creek from there? If not, what makes that an emergency exit?
Okay, I'm trying to think which exhibit might show that. So if you look at the exhibit that's up now, that whole area is a little confusing. You can see the trail connects into that vertical pathway that goes from Wildwood Park into the adobe. The, that trail section connects into that path before you get to the pilasters and the gates that go into the adobe property. The emergency access goes, will be connecting on the other side of that pilaster and gates. So it'll come from the project. It will be built basically across that walkway to connect with where the existing gate is in the office project that's just to the south. So the walkway itself stays, there'll be a sloped roadway down to that walkway, and then there'll be a grasscrete or some kind of a surface for the fire truck, that the fire trucks can use to connect with that gate.
And that will go right into that...
Into that office.
Commercial, property there. It'll go across where the walkway is that goes to the adobe.
Correct.
And that's where the emergency vehicles would, would have access.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure because I really wasn't sure of that. That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Bill?
Thank you, Chairman. I think we talked about this last year. Can the city ref...
Can the city refresh my recollection on what the ongoing legal and maintenance obligations are of the builder to the pathway and the creek? I remember some questions last year about being able to touch one side of the creek but not the other underneath the private property of the shopping centers, and maybe you both could just give an explanation of what you expect to do, and then also what the city has in writing that obliges them to do this, just in case everybody who's nice here disappears and someone else comes in.
Sure. So, the developer is responsible for all of the improvements on the project side of the creek. I don't think they intend to go beyond the center line of the creek.
Okay.
The ma, the trail maintenance would be the obligation of the developer. Anything below the trail or on the other side of the trail fence would be a maintenance obligation of the city. The developer will be responsible for building and maintaining the off-site parking lot since they're going to use that. And the same thing with the bridge, building and maintaining the bridge. There will have to be an easement worked out with the city over the flood control improvements in the future, but as far as maintenance and access on the bridge, that's their primary responsibility.
And is the city only going to have the obligation to maintain the southern or eastern half of the creek because we can't go further into the private property?
That's correct. We'll only be responsible for, well, I shouldn't say that. We, we will have own, property ownership of that part of it on our lot, and so we'll be responsible for everything on our property.
But there is some dividing line where the private property of the commercial shopping centers still own some level into that creek?
Correct, they do own a part of that slope. We still have code enforcement efforts that we can work with on them for erosion and trash control, things like that, but as far as property maintenance, no, it's not the city's obligation.
And maybe one would hope that with more visibility of the creek, that obligations on the commercial center would be more obvious, because I'm sure right now it's a little bit hidden just because of the, being back there without anybody living there. And then, the obligation of the developer is built into the development agreement at this point. I mean, once they record a map, this is part of the ongoing obligation?
Yes, we have conditions of approval attached to tonight's entitlement that would obligate them to recording those as part of their construction documents.
Yeah, and I do appreciate your changes to the path, and it's definitely, and you can tell you put work into it over the last year. We appreciate that a lot. That's all.
Very good. We'll open the public hearing now, and the first speaker slip I have is from Jimmy Lindsay.
Hello, my name is Jimmy Lindsay. I live at 731 Alta Vista Drive. I've been a resident for 25-plus years. My only questions or concerns that I have, I welcome Monarch to the neighborhood. The only thing I would like to see it be condos, not apartments. I've noticed in the city of Vista, we've had plenty of apartments right now, and I read somewhere that Oceanside and Vista has exceeded more apartment complexes than any other community. We've got several apartments. I know we just got the one approved down here, right downtown, where it's going to have a commercial and then apartments above. I would like to see these units to be sellable because I know there's an up-sell right now, and it, and like Mrs. Jackal said, that ship probably already sailed. You know, I'm sure you guys already got it in the thing that they're going to be apartments, then turn them into condos later. Unfortunately, I walk my dog around this neighborhood all the time, and there's a lot of riffraff, you know, and not to say that, you know, that people that are going to buy those upscale apartments, not going to bring some other people with them, because it's pretty hard to walk around here without being approached to, you know, buy drugs or whatever, you know. But nevertheless, I would personally like to see they be sold as condominiums, not so much as apartments. If you guys can maybe review that, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Rud Chafel.
Good evening. My name for the record is Rud Chafel, and I currently reside at 3188 C Street, San Diego. My wife Sally and I, along with our four children, first settled in Vista 45 years ago. Sally and I, in the late 1970s, developed the Rancho Buena Vista Commercial Center, which is located between Wildwood Park and the new Civic Center. The project before you tonight, Monarch Buena Vista, lies on our center's northeast boundary. Monarch is an award-winning development company noted for building high-quality apartments. Our center is excited at the prospect of having a high-quality apartment complex abutting our center. We believe that Monarch's future tenants will utilize the many commercial services that our center provides. We also believe that Monarch's project could be a key part of the city's downtown revitalization plan, which is now gathering considerable momentum. We are pleased that the city plans to add a third retention basin along the Buena Vista Creek, thus reducing the threat of floodwaters flooding our downtown. Owners in two of our buildings, for the record, are being compensated by Monarch for allowing it to meet the city's project requirements. Our center is fully supportive of Monarch's project and urges the planning commission to approve it. Thank you for taking the time to hear us.
Thank you, Mr. Chafel. Next speaker is Brooks Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. For the record, Brooks Kavanaugh, land consultant with about 40 years of history in Vista, some of it walking on the trails of the Old Mobile Home Park to deliver council agendas. I look at the property as a centerpiece. I'm here to bring to your attention my personal concern, not the conservancy's. So, I speak tonight as a member of the community with offices at 777 West Vista Way. But my concerns center on parking and also impact on the Rancho Buena Vista. And I'll be very brief in what I have to say. To begin with, my secretary lives in the Monarch project on Thibodeau Road, and that's a two-story. She's very pleased with its maintenance and upkeep and has good things to say. Last time I drove by that project, I saw a lot of street parking. And I've been by there at night, and I've looked, and I, I see, I see that they're parking deficient. As I drive in our community and look at the new apartments, Bo Beere, I'm sure all of you have these same thoughts, you see more street parking. In fact, I almost had an accident today getting out of the shopping center in front of this project. It used to be Boni's Market, but 99-cent store because I couldn't see around a car that was parked there, which is one of the inhabitants that live in the apartments on the other side. So, we have to recognize as a community, there is a parking deficiency. And I go to this as politely as I can to say, gee, why in the, excuse me, January 24th, 2017, did the city council of your city direct changes to the MU R and the MU zone? And they did this specifically, changed the parking requirements in the MU zone to meet the citywide multifamily parking standards, as noted in a table below. This was adopted. Now, maybe the project was in the pipeline during this adoption, but I happen to be involved in a project likewise that was in the pipeline, and we've been told to follow the new standards. This project is not. And, and I'm just going to read you some numbers into the record because I think this is important. I have the bedroom count and the number of units for each of those totaling 179. The required parking spaces for a one-bedroom under the current imposed standard was 74. I calculate by the new adopted ordinance, it should be 137. The two-bedroom, you have 243, should have been 270. It's not a biggie. Three-bedroom and up, very minor change. Well, what this amounts to is a shortage of 93 parking spaces or a 21% deficiency. So, think about this. This is in the middle of downtown where we are already hurting for parking. It's an isolated project. The only place for inhabitants to park is either on the street or in Mr. Chafel's shopping center, or Old Boni's Market, the 99-cent store. So, my concern, I think, is valid here that, but I have a solution. Why couldn't the developer find a piece of property within the vicinity, purchase it, lease it, and have some additional parking? That might help soften and solve the problem. It would be a mitigation, just a thought. Also, if this is going to be a map and have development requirements, there will be agreements signed by purchasers or occupants that stipulate maybe they shouldn't be doubling up. You know what's happening in the community? Because I tried to do it to see if it works on the Avalon project. I'm going to move in and I'm going to bring in my buddies, and they have three cars. That's what's happening. That's reality. So, as kindly as I can say, something needs to be done about parking in this community and particularly adjacent to our downtown, which is already struggling due to a parking deficiency. Mark my word, this project is approved, that'll happen. Second item, I would...
Mr. Kavanaugh, your, your three minutes is up.
It just exceeded. Well, guess what? This'll go real quick. Interface with Rancho, the Rancho Buena Vista, okay? That's our precious treasure, has a lot of history. All of you know that, you probably can recite it. The point is that I think that the sketches made to address interface, it's just eye wash. It's not going to make a difference in the, in the early time. This site will be higher, it'll peer down, it, there should have been greater separation and better thought about that, but maybe it's too late. Parking's the big issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name's Steve Grochey. I live at 1858 Turnberry Drive here in Vista, and I happen to be the president of the conservancy and want to speak to the pleasant conversations and the working relationship that I had with both the city and the developer. There was several things that were brought up tonight about some of the enhancements on the trail, and I just want to reiterate some of those things. As I look at that map, the parking at 751 will be shared parking. That is one of the considerations that we had, and, and we assume that during the daytime, most people are at work, most people would be wanting to be on the trail, so it'll be perfect for us. The other thing I want to point on the very hand, the left-hand side, that connection to Wildwood Park, presently there's stairs there, which is very difficult for anybody with a handicap situation, and it'll be at grade in the future. So, that's another thing that we considered. We also considered just the trail itself, the enhancement of the trail, the widening of the trail, and the introduction of native plants there, because we, we presently have quite an extensive trail to the east of that, and, and we do have a problem with invasive plants that come into there. So, the city will take this over as a linear park and maintain it and make sure that we don't have that problem anymore. You also saw through one of the prior visuals is that presently that the, the trail and the creek bit aren't associated hardly at all. So, this is going to make it a nice blend, a really good introduction. So, those are some things I just wanted to bring up. Also, the width of the trail, many of these, the things that we brought up at our board meetings, we sat down with the developer, we sat down with the city over a number of occasions, and each time they agreed to those conditions. So, I just want to say that the Vista Conservancy, the board is very happy with what we're seeing here. We understand that it's going to be, not be accessible for the next 18 months or so, but once it is accessible, we'll have a great connection from Wildwood to, to Brangle Terrace Park. The last thing I want to bring up, and this has nothing to do with this project, but I became aware of it just this, today, there's talk of maybe having a traffic circle at the corner of Ponderosa and Vale Terrace. It would be a great enhancement for our trail and for security of people going across that street. So, if it comes before you, I, I want to speak to that now. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Grochey. Cheryl Keck?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Keck. I've been living in Vista for 25 years. At current present time, I do not have a residence.
Could you pull the microphone just a little bit closer to you?
Okay, how's that?
Go.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, my concern about this project are the bats that I have found coming out of the culvert that goes under Civic Center Drive at the end of Wildwood Park. They do follow the creek line, they do, they're insect-eating species. Though common, and not too concerned about their status as an endangered species, they are a benefit to the community in feeding on the insects, but they can also be a hazard being that bats are a common carrier of rabies. So, how would the project be able to address problems of bats getting into open windows, maybe forming new roosts in the, in the dwellings? Perhaps maybe affording more space of a buffer instead of 50 feet from the creek? Maybe expand that buffer to allow them their feeding grounds? There's also an array of wildlife that has taken about eight years to reestablish, being given that this area has been vacant for all this time. For the past, I don't know, since February of 2016, I have been walking the trail every day. I take pictures and photographs of the area's wildlife. There's a lot of interesting things going on in there. There is a resident coyote that does patrol the area, eats the rodents, and there are an array of hawks and owls and protected woodpeckers, a lot of little songbirds. There's, there's an assortment of insects. I actually got a chance to see and photograph Monarch butterflies a little more down from where the basin would be, and, and this is a species that is currently under study up until June 2019 to consider them under the Endangered Species Act. What would be really nice to see is maybe some planting of milkweed to encourage Monarchs to continue coming into this area. And that's basically my main concern is the wildlife that is taking part. This area conjuncts, you know, with the trail, Wildwood Park, and, and Brangle Terrace Park, and it's a nice little corridor for wildlife to bypass residents, you know, eating on their cats, eating on their dogs, whatever, the rabies and stuff. It gives a nice buffer, you know, allowing wildlife to exist along with residents. 179 units just seems to be a little too much for this area. It's high-density housing, and high-density housing will, can bring in conflicts with wildlife along with additional crime. So, that's something else to consider is the increase of crime in this area, which already has a level of crime, which I see on a daily and nightly basis. And that's...
You're summarizing?
Yeah, it's, this is my first time doing something like this, so...
The, the red light has come on that indicates...
Okay, that's fine, and that's exactly what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman. I'm...
Good evening, Chairman Ross Sawyer. Commissioners, Mr. Conley and Mr. Stell. I'm Bob Campbell. I reside at 1467 Maloma Drive in San Marcos, after living in Vista, up on Heather Drive for 30 years, and serving as your Economic Development Director from 1989 to about 2000, and from 2002 to 2010 as a city councilperson. In 1979, I invested in the property that adjoins the Rancho Buena Vista, that was developed by Mr. Chafell, and have been a very happy owner there ever since, with the exception of one species that bothers me a lot, and I'm sure that I'm not making any fun of the lady who just spoke, but it's the species of vagrants who inundate that area down in the creek bed, unfortunately, and do damage to our property, and make a lot of our tenants very uncomfortable. So, I think with the development of this project, that species will be reduced considerably, because we know that the monarch people take good care of their property, and certainly don't want them theirs, as we don't either. Unfortunately, and after 1989, I had joined the city, the city manager made me the manager of Sycamore Creek Mobile Home Park. And after about a month of managing it, I wondered why he didn't like me, because everything was broken there, and there wasn't one thing in that mobile home park that worked. All the sewage, the electrical, nothing worked properly. And it was with relief when they finally decided to let people live someplace that was decent and go away, and the site was clear. But that then created the challenge of what do we do with that beautiful property as to development? And over the years, so many different project opportunities came forward, and I think fortunately, none of those came to fruition, because today you have a developer in front of you that's world-class, highly recognized, wins rewards everywhere they go. And in fact, my wife and I lived in their monarch Shatter Ridge project for 18 months, while my wife was recovering from pulmonary disease, which the doctors insisted we live in a new property, which that was at the time. It was well-built, well-maintained, the monarch people are, as I knew through the development of that project and ever since, are quality, quality people to work with. So, I think that, I believe this is fortunate to have them coming here, and asking to develop their project. I can't speak to parking, as I've not looked at that aspect of it. It's interesting that Mr. Kavanaugh mentions that, because I've owned a property for years over in Arcadia Street, and if the people could park on the front lawn, they would, and would try that if we didn't have a fence up. So, parking is becoming a problem, I think, throughout the community, not just, certainly in this area. However, I think the people are more upscale, possibly that'll be renting here than in my neighborhood in Arcadia, and it should be a lesser problem. I hope that'll be mitigated by whatever actions that they're willing to take. As to the office park, we're willing to have the emergency gate come through our property. I'm the president of the HOA, of the most close building to the project, and we've vetted the need for that gate thoroughly with them, and the minor use of that will not be a problem. So, I would encourage you to approve this project with whatever limited modifications are required, and thank you for listening to me, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any questions? Okay. The last speaker's strip, slip I have is Renita Villa Tescher. Did I say that right?
Good evening. Renata Villa Teschler.
Okay.
1032 Lonsdale Drive, I'm just a couple blocks off of the intersection here at Townsite and Vista Way. I'm coming a little late to the party, but I just wanted to say that I'm eager to see a development here. I walk through this area literally seven days a week, morning or night. I use the area to walk to Vale Terrace, and Bringle Terrace, and then also down to the new Paseo development that you guys did down in Vista. So, really, I really appreciate what it's doing to the community. I think if there's probably just one thing left that you guys maybe have a choice on, it probably comes down to the decision of what to do with the public parking, whether to share it with the guest units, or to leave it open to public access. And I would heavily encourage the latter. I think it's going to be difficult to probably police and enforce how long the guests are there, and really how do you leave spots open for visitors. I really do look forward to inviting my friends in the area, in Carlsbad and such, to pop on down to the new park that just opened up. I'll meet you there, and we'll take a walk around Bringle Terrace. So, I think if you have one choice left, I would just heavily encourage having a developer find another way to satisfy the guest parking requirements. And then I think maybe the last bit is probably, you know, with the 350 parking spaces, I probably find skepticism in the parsing of language versus direct or cumulative effect. I really, I commute through there, so the whole section between Townsite and Civic Center is a cumulative effect. So, obviously, we probably need some help with it right now, so this project will only further impact it. So, I just hope that we really keep on the radar the certain relief projects that are going to be needed to accommodate the new residents. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the last speaker's slip I have for this evening, so if there's no one else, we'll close the public hearing. I'm sorry, did you turn in a speaker's slip? Come and testify, and make sure you fill out a slip for Ms. Turley, please. Name and address for the record, please.
City Creswell 670 Bellar Drive in Vista. I'm right up above. So, at the, at the, one of the preparatory meetings, we, some of the folks asked for covered parking to mitigate the noise coming up. Are we going to be having that? Are those covered parking spots there?
Mr. Conley?
The parking that's adjacent to the slope there is open parking.
So, it's just open?
Correct. There's no covered parking in that area.
Well, here's the thing. On New Year's Eve a couple years ago, the noise from a church down in Bringle Park was coming all the way into my house with all the windows closed and the doors closed. At around midnight, I couldn't get away from it, I was about to call the cops, and I found out later that week from a friend that it was just a church having music outside. So, it gives you an idea of how the sound moves right up that hill, and comes right into our houses. So, without covered parking, we could be looking at some serious noise problems up So, I would be not in favor of the project without having overhangs on the parking there. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Make sure you fill out that slip-
I will.
And give it to Ms. Turley, please. No problem. All right. We'll again close the public hearing and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Looney?
Really a question more for staff. John, does the commission have any legal parking options as far as count, parking space count? I mean-
Meaning requiring additional parking?
Yeah, with the application date being what it was, does it fall under the previous parking requirements?
The application is in the downtown specific plan. When the council updated the parking requirements in early this year, they only changed them in the mixed-use zone, which covers North Santa Fe and some other particular areas of town, but the downtown specific plan was excluded from that change. And so, projects within the DSP can still meet the parking standards, those did not change that were in there since we adopted the plan in 2010.
Okay. Second question, is there any possibility of using that future retention basin for additional parking? Or does the city have a-
No, that's a really good idea, but the problem is you can't get cars down into it, it's too steep, it would require redesign, which would mean we would lose capacity within the basin, which means we would either need more area, or we wouldn't be able to provide the flood control that it's designed for now.
But currently, is it used as a retention basin?
No, I mean, it's designed for use as a retention basin only, it's not designed for any other purpose. We looked at possible alternate uses of the bottom of the basin, but because of its hidden location, and the fact that it's going to be very steep and deep and difficult to get in and out of, we determined that really wasn't feasible. We're going to look at that again before we do our final design, but at this point, we're not anticipating there'll be any use of the bottom of the basin.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Commissioner Kramer? Okay, thank you. One question for Ms. Gunter concerning the property. One of the things that we didn't talk about was management. Is there going to be onsite manager, 24-hour, somebody there onsite?
Yes, there will be.
Okay, all right. So, if someone in the neighborhood has a problem with anything going on, there's somebody representing monarch that's going to be there that can address that problem?
Yes, there is.
Okay, very good.
And Chairman, would you be open to a little bit of discussion about the parking questions that came up from the community?
Sure.
First, I'd like to address the shared parking lot, and maybe remind the commission when we came a year ago, that parcel was actually originally part of what the city was going to sell to monarch, and make that part of the project, and the intent was always that it would be parking. In the discussions with the conservancy and with staff, the desire for that to be trail parking during the day made a lot of sense, it was obviously very important to the community, and through those discussions, it seemed like it was better for that to be retained by the city in ownership. We would, I think we've got some conditions even that require that we work out the details on that parking lot, so that we can do signage. It would be very easy to enforce a, you know, daytime trail parking only, guest parking only during the evenings, and that would really be the intent, is that it be open for trail parking during the daylight hours when the trail would be in use. In terms of just the total number of parking spaces, I know that your community has struggled with parking standards, especially for multifamily. Monarch has done a lot of apartment projects in the region, and typically, they park their projects at about 1.8 to 1. And on this site, that would be about 322 parking spaces total, that would be for residents and for guests. They are very clear about what parking availability is when they're doing their leasing, and they try to control that so that people are very aware that there is an assigned spot in their garage, and what the other available parking is. They have had very good success in managing that and working with that. So, in this case, again, particularly because it's downtown, because there is bus service available on East Vista Way, they're less than a mile from the Sprinter station, we think that those downtown parking standards will be plenty sufficient for the proposed uses. If there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Very good. Commissioner Bell?
Don't go anywhere, I had a question for you. You may or may not know, or maybe the partners know, what's the average vacancy rate of the Shatter Ridge development? Is there 2%, 5%, 10% that is there, or is it just 100% full all the time? Okay. Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. I was thinking of that in terms of the parking as well, that's all I had.
Commissioner Garrison?
Could you put the slide back up that has the elevations where the apartments are versus the houses on the top of the hill?
The cross-sections?
Yeah, the cross-section. That. So, noise would tend to go up, and how far is it from where the parking is to where the houses are? In other words, would that noise not emulate more up? And what would be the noise level? Didn't we do sound measurements?
Sorry, I'm looking for our acoustical consultant. In terms of distance, the elevation differential from the parking lot up to the pad of those buildings is about 53 feet vertical, and it's about 125 feet to the closest parking space to the houses.
Could somebody give me some idea what that would mean as sound travels, what the noise level, DBA, for a car or cars running, and how much that would dissipate before it got to the houses?
Yeah, I'm going to introduce our noise consultant from Helix Environmental. Thank you, Jason.
Hi, my name is Jason Runyon, I'm from Helix Environmental Planning. So, I did the noise modeling for this project, and one of the things that we did model was parking lot noise, and one of the things that we were looking at is the slamming of parking, of car doors, and how that sound would affect the residents on the hill above the project. So, what I ended up doing was taking measurement of a car door slamming, and extrapolated that over the distance, using a model that took, that accounted for the elevation change and for the topography of the site. And at that distance, with 120 door closures an hour, it was approximately 30 DBA, which is 15 less than what the ordinance requires. So, at that distance, it's not really, it's somewhat negligible.
Okay, thank you. Question number two, would it be possible to put more vegetation between this development and those houses?
From a noise standpoint, vegetation doesn't actually do a whole lot. You'd need a really thick forest for a much longer distance for, to get enough, yeah, to get enough reduction.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you put the site plan back up, Patsy? The one that shows the annex? Yeah, that's fine. So, the blue parking lot, what is to the, when you're looking at this diagram, to the left, is that where the old gas station was?
Auto loans or something like that? Yeah, that's what, that's correct.
Is that still vacant? Is-
No, actually, there's an auto loan office in there that's operating right now.
Oh.
I think there's a sign on the door saying they're moving, but-
Oh, there was, sorry.
I was just thinking, if it was that, still that gas station was on that property, maybe that could be, help the parking. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right. What is parking onsite management? The bats, the vector control, come take care of-
We actually have, I believe the biologist- Yes, we have the biologist here that evaluated the site, he can explain that issue. I think they looked at that pretty extensively as a result of the comments, so I'm going to let Mr. Merkel come up, if that's okay?
Okay, certainly.
Thank you, Keith Merkel, with Merkel &amp; Associates, 5434 Roughen Road, San Diego. Yeah, Merkel &amp; Associates has completed the biological work on the site, actually, we've done it many times over the past several years. And the issue really is that there are bats in some of the structures along the creek itself. There was a question about the bats moving into new structures, that generally really isn't a big problem, most of the new structures have screening around the vent holes and so forth that prevent bats from moving into the new structures. So, they're found in older structures. The bats that are here are a pretty common bat, they're a myotis, so that they are found along the creek area, in Vista, up and down, and onto the Carlsbad, and throughout the Southwest. They're a common species. There's not a large nursery of bats, just a rather, a smaller number, so it's not really a maternal roost area. So, I'm not sure if that's answering the question or not.
I think that helps, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Comments from the student commissioners?
I know Martinez. I was thinking that the whole implementation of this project could help bring diversity to, to downtown, but also the parking thing. I was thinking since the 9/10 start, the bottom corner is usually empty. I mean, I know you can't really buy like, like a fifth of it, but I mean, there's various little sites around that could also help. So I was just thinking, there's small sections that could help reduce the parking, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Commissioners, oh, Commissioner Kramer, I'm sorry. You're done? Okay. Commissioner Garrison?
What, what is the anticipated start and completion of the project? Number two, is there going to be blasting? And how many days a week is there going to be construction going on?
I'm going to ask Ms. Gunter to answer those or the developer. Does they know their construction schedule? I don't.
The total duration of construction from start to finish is probably about 24 months. The initial work would be doing the, the grading on the site and all of the site prep to do that, and then that would be followed by phased building construction. There is no blasting that's necessary on this site. And the anticipation is that we would do construction per the city's ordinance, which allows for Saturday construction. I think it has a later start and an earlier end time on Saturdays. I think that actually had been raised as a question in early design, or maybe it was another project that I was here and heard. We would absolutely like to be able to do that work on Saturdays because without that, it really extends the, the duration of the construction period out even longer and-
Just to clarify, the condition of approval is 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday and 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday. Our normal construction hours are until 4:00 PM on Saturday, but because of the adobe being adjacent and the fact that they have a lot of weekend events, they were amenable to an earlier quit time at 2:00 PM.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. That ends our discussion. Any comments or a motion? Commissioner Jackal?
I would just like to say how pleased I am at the improvements that have been made in the project. I thank you for the added amenities, the enhanced paving, the screening of the adobe with landscaping. I, I think it's going to be a very good project. I'm just desperately worried about the parking, so.
Anyone else? Commissioner Kramer?
It's real this time. Pressing the button was real this time. I, I love the project. I loved what Monarch did in Shatter Ridge and Miramesa. I think it's a fine company, does an excellent job and, and to have been like Mr. Campbell, to have been a resident there, you're blessed. It's just, it's a fine project. I am concerned about the parking. I, I know that Monarch is, is the high-end of rental, so I, I really don't see people living there or going to necessarily be using the, the train or the bus system. So I think that parking will be an issue, but I don't see that there's anything we can do about it. So I will be in support and hope I get invited for a cookie.
Commissioner Garrison?
I just want to say I, I like what you've done with the amenities here because there are some really great amenities really close. You've got the basketball courts at Brangle, you've got Saturday, Sunday basketball at this De Magnet Middle School, you've got, it's not Peter Igoe Park anymore, is it? What is it called? The one on Townsite? Used to be Peter Igoe.
Luz Duran Park, you mean?
Luz Duran. And, you know, you have that park. So that's a real plus. So what you've done for the roughly 290 kids that are going to be here, I like that. So I appreciate the adjustments you've made in that and I think it fits very well in the community and that's one of the reasons.
I tend to agree. I think they've done a great job in responding to our comments from last year at the early design review and I'm, I think, I think this is going to be a good project for the city. So Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seeing no other lights, I would like to go forward to adopt Resolution 2000-Next approving the mitigated negative declaration and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Monarch Buena Vista Project, P16-0394-Second. Adopt Resolution 2017-Next approving a site development plan, vesting tentative subdivision map and condominium housing permit for 179 multiple-family residential units on 7.98 acres at 751 East Vista Way.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Looney?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Looney seconds the motion. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the project. Commissioner Kramer? Okay. Please cast your vote. And the motion is approved unanimously of the members that are here. So thank you very much. Good job. All right. Are there any Rancho students left that need their, need their forms signed? Why don't you hang on just five minutes and we'll let Mr. Conley do his report and then we'll sign your forms. Mr. Conley?
I have nothing to report tonight other than we have another meeting on December 5th. That will be our next meeting. We will not have a second meeting in November due to the holidays, so I hope everyone enjoys their Thanksgiving.
Okay. Very good. Any other comments? Seeing none, then we will stand adjourned until December 5th.